Okay, it's kind of clock. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Gillum County Court, March 19th, and we're in Arlington today. The meeting is called to order, a forum has been established and a lot of the flags salute.
I am glad that we can speak to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation in front of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Okay, we're going to begin with additions or revisions to the agenda. Are there any additions or revisions? Okay. Correspondence, public comment. We're going to start with a couple of pieces of correspondence. Each of our commissioners have have those, and go ahead, Commissioner Wilkins.
Um, yes, we received a response um from Annabelle Neal and Sean Bell. Uh, are they on?
Sean is.
Okay.
Yeah, Sean's on.
I'm here.
Yeah, I'm understanding that you were, Annabelle, were going to provide a brief statement?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can do that if you'd like. So, uh, per the, the letter, the email that we sent over to you guys, we, uh, have opted to withdraw our application for the right of way grant, and that is based on a number of factors. Uh, some of those factors are the, the timing and the very early stage, uh, engineering and design that we are in the middle of. We anticipate that we'll have a decent, um, idea of routing and, and, uh, structure design and probably anywhere from six months to two years out, depending on a, a number of pieces that need to come together, um, one being available land, um, environmental studies, et cetera. So at this time, um, we're opting to withdraw our right of way application. And further to that, we have been in discussions with very high level discussions at this point, but with discussions with, uh, EDPR and Brookfield, who are the other two, um, developers that are, um, potentially developing in Gillum County. So that's kind of where we stand right now, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Um, yeah, Sean, and I see in the letter here, there's some, uh, something to consider, some improvements, like the conversation we had the other day. I look forward to reaching out to you to, for some suggestions too, and, and, uh, see what we need to do to possibly make our application, uh, improved.
Yep, certainly, I'm, I'm, I'm always available to, to chat about this and to help in any way I can with the county and county process. It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Sean.
Commissioner Wilkins, do you have any questions?
Um, I, I would just, I'd like to see the letter that was sent to Cordelia posted on the website. So it's, because it should be public. And it's not on there.
Yes, we can do that. Will you work with, um, since I departed conflict, Commissioner Wilkins, will you work with, um, Anya to get that done?
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was in the, was it March packet? But anyway, okay.
Okay, it was on the February 5th meeting, but it was not on the, it's not on the website.
Okay, I'll post it.
Yeah.
All right, next piece of correspondence, Commissioner Watkins.
Okay, Jessica Isley sent one. I'm questioning the Woolery Project being on the county court's agenda. It appears they have decided to move their project to Washington, or is this a separate project as presented on the Goldendale Chambers webpage? Here's what it says. Woolery Project in Goldendale is an exciting and innovative aimed at revitalizing the local community through sustainable practices and innovative solutions. This project focuses on transforming the former Columbia Gorge Aluminum Smelter Site into a hub for clean energy and economic development. By leveraging the area's natural resources, the Woolery Project aims to create jobs, support businesses, and, and contribute to the region's renewable energy goals. The phone number listed does not belong to Rod McGuire. Um, it is difficult to believe the Woolery Project in Goldendale is a separate endeavor when after a decade the first hasn't gotten off the ground. Also, am I to assume the Woolery has cut ties with Representative Greg Smith, whom they claim to be working with at the previous court meeting when they refused to participate in the Kelly Nonprofit Consulting. With Representative Smith's recent issues, I would find any collaboration with him concerning. And then she lists that website, which I did go on and look at that website, and it doesn't appear to be the same project, but we will verify that with the Woolery.
Okay. All right, um. Let's continue with the written correspondence, and then we'll get to the individual correspondence, people who are, or public comment were here. Uh, we have a I think that's all of the written. Is there anyone online who has any public comment?
I, I believe, so, um, I just will bring up, uh, Les Rourke mentioned, uh, some kind of a, uh, train alert system app. Um, we discussed it at the CAC meeting last night, but, um, I think Anya looked into it, and it's not available for out here. Just out these four. Yeah, so anyway, but, um, Marta actually was gonna look into it further, so. Cause I, I think that was an email he sent to the court, to everyone, wasn't it? You know, I think it came at eight o'clock, is that the one that came at eight o'clock last night? I have not, I wasn't meant at eight o'clock last night.
It was, it was a couple days ago. I had to send it to the, um, CAC members.
Okay, okay. Anyway, that's where we had our CAC meeting last night, so we discussed it.
All right, we also have a quarterly report from Kelly Nonprofit Consulting, which is included in the packet. And so, uh, public comment for the general, um, general agenda, not the two public hearings, will happen at this time. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time, and at other times throughout the meeting, speakers are asked to raise their hand and be recognized by the chair, give name, um, and city, and limit their comments to, we say three minutes? Three minutes. Okay, the first person on the, on the list is Haley Andrews. Doctor, come up.
Haley Andrews, Director of the Condon Early Learning Center, 609 South Main in Condon. I'm the one who was at work at 8:00 PM last night, who sent you an email, um, after looking at the agenda on the website. And if that's okay, I'll just read my email. Dear Judge Patno, Commissioner Watkins, and Commissioner Wilkins, uh, the early, the Condon Early Learning Center appreciates your willingness to include a line item dedicated to supporting childcare providers in Gillum County. As you know, the idea of a childcare endowment received strong community support during the county court's recent town halls. A recognition of the critical impact high-quality childcare plays in supporting healthy and safe kids, working families, local businesses and organizations, and the broader community. Consistent and dependable operational funding is critical to ensure childcare providers in both Condon and Arlington can continue to offer these valued services at tuition rates that are affordable for Gillum County families. With that in mind, we would like to propose the county court consider approaching childcare funding in the same way it has historically approached funding for the Homestead Rebate Program. That is, in addition to the line item dedicated to funding childcare providers each year, we respectfully request the county court establish a separate account similar to the Homestead Rebate Endowment Fund, where a percentage of waste management host fees could be transferred each year to create a childcare endowment fund. Gillum County has used this approach successfully for the Homestead Rebate Program over the past 30 years, paying current rebates and building a substantial endowment reserve without impacting county services nor the ability to invest in other county priorities. I also wanted to clarify whether with the line item approach, we would need to apply for an operational support grant each year. We appreciate Gillum County's continued support of Condon Early Learning Center and the children and families we serve. So we had some questions about how that line item would work, too, would be, um, I don't know if we're
Well, I, I think everyone can address this, but we did at a prior county court meeting about a month ago indicated that we were going to enlist the assistance of the Budget Committee to help us through the the process with how these line items would work, um, and whether or not um, an endowment would be created within or outside of Gillum County. So, that's as I remember it, each of us can, can speak to that. Yeah, okay, that's what got left out was whether or not, yeah, so I really appreciate your, and my personally, my is to have the endowment outside of the county, and to, uh,
With, um, with, uh, with, I guess, grant season around the corner, and with what's on the agenda today with not being able to use operational support grants for payroll, um, we're really curious about what that line item would look like for this year.
I do want to clarify that what's in the packet here is simply a recommendation to the county court. We've taken no action and won't until we get to that part of the agenda. So I would say, let's, let's wait till we get to that portion of the agenda and then move forward from there.
Okay, okay, so we support childcare, as we always have. Okay, okay, so when we get to that issue, are we gonna, can we, can we speak again?
Well, we have a, a county court meeting on April 2nd in Condon, and if there's anything that we need to address that comes out of this meeting, we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or we may allow some public comment depending upon how that goes. Okay?
I am still confused. So are you voting on that today of whether or not to accept that recommendation?
We're gonna have to hear what, what the committee has to say about it.
Okay, okay, so can I provide public comment and how that would impact childcare if that were, if we were to have to?
How would you do it on time? Um, we're over.
Okay, I'll make sure you have an opportunity to speak when we get to that portion.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, um, we also have Mike Allen.
Is it still getting the speaker back, Lee?
Um, we have the mic up here, sorry.
I'm loud enough. I'm Mike Allen, Arlington, Oregon. A couple weeks ago, I was in a meeting with the county court up here on various things, and, uh, brought up the issue of Greater Oregon, voting on Greater Oregon. Uh, I was told that you would be taking it up. I haven't seen that, but I missed last month's meeting. And so I came, come today to ask you to take up the issue of Greater Oregon. We're only one of two counties in Eastern Oregon that haven't voted for it. I'd like to see us go on record one way or the other, in being in favor or opposed to Greater Oregon. Personally, I would be in favor of it as a statement of protest, carries very little weight other than that. But once again, we're in the legislative session, and we see all kinds of laws coming out from the IFI corridor that don't benefit Eastern Oregon. And I think it's time that we at least make a statement in Gillum County as to whether or not, uh, we carry any weight out here or not. And this is one way to.
I think one of the questions we had at the court meeting, I think we kind of touched on this briefly, was how did that come to the other counties? You know, was it a group that?
In some cases, well, going back to the history, I don't know how much time I have left here, but going back to the history, uh, the counties along the Idaho border who get their television from Boise and are more connected to that time zone than, than this time zone, decided that, that Oregon was passing the blood laws that didn't benefit them, and they would rather go that way. Uh, so it was kind of started as, as an intent to, I believe, to, uh, say, you know, we've had enough, we wanna, we wanna move to our neighbors.
So did the, did the counties, did they wish that?
The way some of them did it, I know, uh, was through a, a petition process.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that all of them did it that way. I think some were initiated by the county courts themselves. And, uh, so I don't know why we haven't got involved in that. I will say this, that it has drawn national attention. And the last time there was a vote on any of this, uh, it was in the national media. So you have to kind of be prepared. It's not going to be just a local story. It's not just going to be a Gillum County thing. But in some ways, that's a good, good thing. Uh, you know, you, uh, what is it? Uh, any press is good press, you know? You, uh, you get your name out there, people might start looking a little more at, uh, Gillum County and, and what, what it has to offer. But anyways, it's, uh, to my knowledge, it's been through petition, through initiation, and I'm, I'm here to say with at least one voter, I'd like to see us vote it on the ballot and make a decision. Right now, we're sitting in Ireland. All the counties around us have voted for it.
Well, there you are. You can be the petitioner and go around.
Okay, well, if I have to do that, I will, but I refer to, you know, bring it to you and have.
Cause I don't have a problem putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, it's like I said, it's more of a statement. Because we really have no say in Portland, or in Salem. It's the IFI court who has all control.
So what we could do is just pick it up at the next meeting as an agenda item, and just decide how we want to move forward. Would that be okay? So we will do that. Meanwhile, maybe do some research on it, Mr. Cowan, or Mr. Cowan, the extra teacher? Do some research on it, so you can come to the meeting and.
You want me to do some research on it?
Yeah, that would be great, if you could. Okay, next, we have Hannah Bass.
I think mine can wait, Kristi.
You do?
Till we hit that.
Okay, we're arguing here for the, um, the, uh, grant process. Okay. We'll make sure that we have an opportunity for additional comment when we get to that. All right, and David Greiner.
I would be in the same situation.
Okay, all right. All right, um, that is all of the general public comments. We have Kimberly Lindsay, update on community counseling solutions. Come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm recovering from a cold and laryngitis, so my voice mostly here, but, uh, might crack a little bit, so just, uh, just for me, so, um, Anya said I have 20 minutes, but I think I can do it in 15. So I'm gonna, um, put my clock up there in the pen and me, so that I can be thoughtful about that, so. All right. Mostly what I have are just informational updates, um, and I sent everything in. I'll try to periodically check and see if you have any questions, um, but do stop me. Just again, being thoughtful about time. So the first item is, it's just a pamphlet. Um, as you will recall, Gillum County opted into the deflection program, Measure 110. Uh, you know, just summarizing and including some shortcuts. It decriminalized a lot of, uh, drugs, um, the deflection bill recriminalized many things, but it had, um, a deflection program component. So this is the brochure that was put together for Gillum County. I just wanted to provide that to you and let you know that we haven't had, uh, much of any activity, um, in deflection referrals, not, uh, criticism, the sheriff is here, I don't want to put him on the spot. Um, you know, the plurals are largely dependent upon drug-related activity. Um, and then those, uh, charges that are going to qualify. So some drug activity are not going to fall. If you're pulled over and you have, you know, I'm just making this up, but you have 100 fentanyl pills, you're not going to be eligible for deflection. So I hope to, to keep the deflection program in Gillum County, but I just would state that the numbers are very low, and uh, we recognize that, and so we'll see what happens at the legislature with those funds, since the sheriff's here, so anything adds to what I said.
Sound good.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that?
So that was a, we got 45,000, wasn't it?
Seven five.
Or 75, okay.
That's a two-year dollar, no? So it's, um, oh, wait, hold on, think about that.
We had 150 to start out.
Yeah, so it's 75 a year.
And we had to do 80,000.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
And it goes to 75 next year.
Yeah.
That was to implement it?
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah, you had 150, and you, we had about like 15 months of that, or 18 months, so it was um, more per month than what we'll have moving forward in July, 75,000 per year.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Okay, the next document, I'm just going back through my, uh, I mean, my notes and documents that I keep each time I meet with, meet with you. I'm not sure that I shared with you the, um, comments from our 100 best survey. Uh, so this could be repetitive. If so, I apologize. I just couldn't find it. Um, so these are the, every year CCS participates in the 100 best nonprofit survey. It's a voluntary survey, so it's not every nonprofit in Oregon, just to be clear, just those entities that do participate were ranked as a large nonprofit, so we get compared against other nonprofits. Um, the rankings and data are helpful. I did share that with you, but I'm not finding where I shared the comments. So the comments are the things that the employees said. You have, uh, two columns. Generally, you have, um, the, uh, you know, what makes the organization great, as well as, um, what would you like to see CCS improving? It'd be good with time reading, you know? Do you have any questions or comments on the column?
No, I went through it last night.
Awesome, I don't have a.
All right, CCS is a zero suicide agency. Zero Suicide, again, is a, um, national movement around, um, ending suicide. So we, we know that zero might be a little aspirational, but as I said to you before, um, one is not okay. So that's the, that's the name zero. Every time I meet with you, I try to talk about zero suicide just for a moment. It's a super important talking, um, topic. And we put out a newsletter now, so included in your packet is the newsletter. We have a great, a great story from employee on the QPR training, which I hear Gillum County is going to do. So thank you very much for that. I think it's important, so we're excited to deliver the QPR training.
Could you go over what QPR is, so that they understand? It just came to our staff meetings, our staff is going to take part. I don't think commissioners are aware.
Commissioners are? Well, the next document in your packet has the, the trainings, and there's just, there's a very brief summary in there on QPR, uh, but also the employee, um, Nancy's story is the title in this newsletter, talks about the benefits of QPR. So QPR, it's a two-hour training. It's designed for laypeople to give them, us, we, some tools on how to have a conversation with somebody who might be struggling. So I like to use the grocery store analogy. Uh, thanks, most of us have been there. You're talking with somebody in the grocery store, and you just say casually, hey, how's your day? And the person says, oh, I've had better. I, you know, sometimes we're in a hurry, um, we have these pressing things that are going on in our life, and we will say something like, well, we might ask, but we try to show them that the glass is half-full, not empty, and to put a positive spin on it. Uh, well, at least it's, it, it, you know, whatever it is they describe, if they describe anything, it's not that bad, or, uh, tomorrow will be better. And I'm not saying that that's the wrong thing to do, but it doesn't acknowledge the struggle that they're experiencing in the moment. And it can be a missed opportunity if they're seriously thinking about harming themselves. That conversation is probably not going to move them away from harming themselves. So QPR question, persuade, refer, so ask the question, what's, you know, what's going on, and then spend a few minutes talking with them about, uh, well, I guess persuading them to reach out and get some assistance, and then maybe making that connection through a referral. So in Nancy's story, she talks about, um, again, this is a CCS employee. All CCS employees are required to take QPR. Uh, she describes a conver, well, actually, she's talking about her, her EAP, so let me back up on that, but um, she, one of the things that she had shared with me that she's struggling with was how to have a conversation with a person in her life who was really struggling with depression, and she felt that QPR had helped, helped her, um, helped her with that. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Kind of, okay. Then mental health first aid. So this fires just trainings that we're doing, uh, and promoting through that. All right, uh, the next document is our Warm Line Quarterly Report. I give these to you depending upon when I meet. So that you can see the data that comes in on the Warm Line. That's a statewide resource. Uh, 20,000 calls in the last quarter, which I just love those numbers from the Warm Line, and that it's a CCS program, so. There are, um, we get, I feel like we're in a state of constant audit, um, either some financial audit or some uh, program audit.
On the, it's the way that.
On the addiction side, we get audited by about four different entities. So the state audit is, audits, audits us for addictions work. Um, the Criminal Justice Commission, uh, audits us for any addictions work that we do if we are serving the criminal offender population, which we are in Gillum County. Uh, so it's, it's kind of two audits on the same program. And this is the substance use audit in front of you. It's a summary of the audit, um, and actually, sorry, this is the batter's intervention program audit. So the good news is that we had like the lowest score and the highest score this year. Lowest score for risk that they've given and the highest score for responsiveness, so that's great. But in general, we have work to do on this program. Uh, so we're sending two employees to go to the national training. It's about $5,000 per employee. So a bit expensive, but we want to make sure that we pass this audit. So want to let you know that's the work that we are doing. We don't get many people referred in Gillum County to the batter's program, but we want to make sure that it's a service that's available when, um, circuit or justice court does refer someone. And if you're going to do batter's treatment, then you gotta have this. So any questions or comments on that? All right, uh, burn dollars. This is again a part of Measure 110. All of the marijuana tax dollars that Oregon gains goes to Burn Behavioral Health Recovery Network for treatment. The last go-around, it was a two-year grant. This time, it's a four-year grant. Actually, shared this document with you prior. Um, I just wanted to have it in your head in case you wanted to refer to it. So Gillum County was reviewed by the state, our application, um, as well as another entity that put in for funding in the month of February, and we were, CCS was approved. Uh, there's another entity that was also approved. They do telehealth only. It looks like they were approved for about $30,000 per year. I think it's great to have choice, um, so for an individual to be able to go to CCS or to this telehealth provider. My struggle is that, um, they've provided services to one individual in Gillum County in the last two years. So it's a good operating margin, I guess, if you're in business, right? To 30,000 for one person, but, um, anyways, just leave my comments there. So we're excited to offer burn services again. Anyways, just leave my comments there. So we're excited to offer burn services again for the next four years in Gillum County. Um, and we have one more meeting coming up with the state to review the dollars. Any questions on that? Hey, uh, and then the next document was the, the funding levels. The next several documents, I just give you information on the different residential programs that CCS offers. I won't go over each one of them individually. Um, but happy to answer any questions. And then we have our customer satisfaction survey results. We do those every quarter. This is the fourth quarter. Um, results from last year. Next time I meet with you, you'll have. Depending upon when I meet with you, possibly first and second quarter from this year. It shows all of the counties, um, but you know, obviously specifically at Gillum County. It is a voluntary survey. There were three individuals that responded for Gillum County. And, um, people either agreed or strongly disagreed, and there was one neutral comment. There was no specific, uh, actual comments. It was just one neutral response. Any questions on the customer satisfaction survey? Okay. And then we, I always let you know about any grants that we apply for. We did apply for one, um, that would allow us to hire a bilingual, bi-cultural, Spanish-speaking clinician for folks that come into services. In Gillum County. We do offer that now, um. We just, it just be a bit of a struggle. To get them in because we don't have a person that's specifically dedicated for Gillum. The person that we hire would not be dedicated to Gillum too, to be clear. They'd be divided up between a couple of counties, but there'd be a lot greater access, um, and easier to get them in. And I believe that's it. And I, I think a one minute shy of fifteen minutes, so.
Uh, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Question.
I was looking, there was a lot of comments from Umatilla County.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I just want to say thank you for doing what you do. You have a passion for, we worked together for a long time.
Uh, yeah.
And, um, yeah, I just want to say thank you for what you do.
Thank you for letting us do what we do in Gillum.
Just for the public, um, the county, Gillum County's, um, charged with, um, mental health, behavioral health services. Addiction Services and Community Counseling Solutions provides that service. So it's a pass-through grant, pass-through funding. Through Gillum County that's passed directly to Community Counseling Solutions, which sure, Gillum, Wheeler, Grant, Umatilla. How many more counties?
More.
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 You did great.
Okay, good. All right. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Okay.
All right, um. Item three point two on the agenda. Let's go back to discussion regarding the Wollery and Kelly nonprofit consulting services. Commissioner Watkins. Okay, so on February nineteenth, um, Kristen Monahan from Kelly Nonprofiting Consulting reached out to me. And provided, um, this, which is on the website for people if they want to look at it, um. Talking about how, how things were going. And then, um, she asked. She was asked by a community member if they had the capacity to have, um, to work with the Wollery. Um, so I, I went back to her and asked her, I said, um. Who was the, you know, who was the person that reached out to her? And she said that it was Caitlin Kennedy. So I reached out Caitlin and Caitlin said that, um, I'm trying to bring her, I mean, I'm sorry, um. She said, I had a chance to connect this week with Rod McGuire of the Wollery, Friends of Wollery. I was curious if there was a capacity for the Kelly nonprofit to potentially lean in and support this nonprofit. When I asked Rod why he didn't initially pursue the support through the initiative, he said he just didn't understand enough about it. Is there, if there isn't any space in twenty twenty-five, could there be in twenty twenty-six? And then I think she came, she came back and told me that I, um. Let's see. Sorry, I'm going back and forth. Then she originally said that the Ford, um, family, uh, foundation. Had actually worked with them and that, I think that's how they had the grant writer that they use. Um, and I believe. She said that she, they were wanting to use the Kelly Nonprofiting so they could. Um, potentially go out and get donors such as wind farms, um, companies and stuff like that. So I told her that they had been approached to begin with about using Kelly nonprofit. They had declined to use those services, um. Early on, and then it was brought up during the January meeting of twenty twenty-four. And I think they still had declined. And when we, when they came to us in August. And asked for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I believe, Chris, you asked them if they were interested in using the Kelly nonprofit, which. At that time, they have declined it. So my, the reason I'm bringing it to the court is I'm not. I'm not opposed to them using the Kelly nonprofit. I just want to make sure that. First of all, it is going to be in Gillum County. And second of all, are they really serious about using this? These tax dollars that they were fully opposed to before to use them. I, I think. If people go, get on and, and look at their disc, they'll see that, that Kelly Nonprofiting has been doing lots of good things for. Our nonprofits here in Gillum County, so.
Commissioner, I just didn't, I thought that that was something I needed to bring to the court. Commissioner Watkins, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I have, uh, heard anything in contact or anything, and I know there was kind of some confusion with the Golden Dale thing too. Um, but I think that's a separate entity. That's a, that they were thinking that the Wollery here was trying to. Possibly build their state funds over there in Washington, but that's, that's not the case, my understanding. And, uh, yeah, I, I mean, it's available for them if they want to try to reach it.
Right.
So.
And my thoughts would be that, you know, it's available to all nonprofits. There was another entity. Believe it was the Historical Society that had their own grant writer and initially they didn't want to use. Kelly nonprofit and then came back and said they did want to, and we allowed that. My caveat would be verification that their project will occur in Gillum County if we're using. Public funds to fund this. It should, um, the, the end result should be, uh. The plan for an entity in Gillum County. Ev- all, everyone else had intangibles that they are, um. Using the funds for such as board development, grant, technical assistance, that sort of thing. But this. The result of this one will be something that's tangible and that will be a building. So, um, I just want to make sure that the plan is that it's going to be here. Um, so can you follow up? Could you please?
And so is it a consensus of the court if, yeah, if, if they're not. Building out of the county and they are committed to this process, that the court is not opposed to them using those services?
It is a consensus. Yes, okay. So everybody agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and I'll let, um, Kristen know. Thank you. So you're going to follow up with him?
Yes, please, thank you. Uh, Grow Gillum County Quarterly Report, Kelly Nonprofit Consulting. That's just that.
In the packet is a quarterly report for Kelly Nonprofit Consulting, which, uh, details the entities which they assisted and where. They are in their, uh, to those entities. Consent agenda. And I would encourage everybody to go on and look at this. It's, it's, they, they've done a lot. Is the screen?
Ask a question.
Yes.
By using, use of public funds, does that mean the use of this nonprofit, Kelly nonprofit?
Um, use of public fund. Gillum County is paying for Kelly nonprofit consulting, which is. Allowing the entities to use them as consultants. Yes. Or that, answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Right. And I think we've been billed like, is it sixty thousand? I would have to ask our financials, um.
I think we received two bills. They're both between like, uh, thirty-five to forty thousand. So we're just about at the eighty thousand dollar mark for the past two quarters combined.
Okay. And so for this fiscal year, um, it will be under what we expect, I, I expect. So, okay.
Yes.
Consent agenda. We have minutes from the February nineteenth meeting and March fifth. Also. Uh, Sheriff Bedenworth, there's three items, and I just want to give, um, the sheriff, although. We would be voting on the consent agenda as a whole. I want to make sure that the sheriff has an opportunity to address. Anything he would like to address on his three items. That is, um, Nortech Intergovernmental Agreement renewal twenty twenty-five, the ratification of the Nortech twenty twenty-four. Agreement and the, uh, North Gillum Rural Fire Protection District Police Amendment.
I, I just came just to.
Okay.
Have any questions?
Okay.
I have a quick question on the, uh, the amended lease was just because of the amount, wasn't it?
Yes, it has the amount of the construction costs and those are real now where they were estimated to be.
Okay.
So that's the one change.
Yeah.
So on the lease, the way I read the lease, two thousand dollars a month, basically, there will be, uh, uh. We will not have to pay the two thousand dollars a month in exchange for the work that we've done for ten years.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes. Could be, uh, renegotiated or revisited in ten.
So there is a clause we can revisit it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, because ten, ten years times two thousand dollars. Um, yeah, no, we're not, so it's what we put into it, but I don't think that was necessarily the intent. I think part of it is we're taking a building that we're, um, an existing building, not being new construction, which is cheaper. We're giving it a useful purpose, um, and I think that that, there's some, there's some value in that a lot. Um, so, but I just want to make sure that there is some opportunity to, to discuss, since we put seven hundred and ten thousand dollars into it. And that two thousand, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and we can discuss it in the budget meeting, but I'm still showing my, um, budget. Sheriff's Office budget of that two thousand dollars.
Uh-huh.
There's just twenty-five thousand dollars and then that's taken out.
Okay.
By the finance department, I guess, and put them back into. That's been aware of that money being though. I don't know if that's the way it should be done, but it's, it's in.
Thank you, okay. Are there any other questions?
I have any.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second their motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Any no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Hey. We're to the point, public hearing on the Strategic Investment Program Agreement with Leaning Jennifer Wind Power LLC. The public hearing on the Strategic Investment Program Agreement with Leaning Jennifer Wind Power LLC is now called to order. The county court would like to hear from the public on the issue during this hearing. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the county court makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say. We want to give, to hear your point of view. If you wish to comment on this hearing item, you'll have the opportunity to do so at this time. All persons commenting must be recognized by the judge. Be clearly and slowly and state your name and address for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. At this time, are there any conflicts of interest in this matter among the county court? Okay. All right, um, we will begin with the public testimony at this time. I have a list of those who have signed up to testify. Catherine Greiner.
Morning. So on your current SIP is the city of Condon has received about a hundred thousand less this year from previous years. So we're, we got about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year. So I noticed in your strategic plan that hasn't been changed and in all the meetings, housing is extremely important. Mm-hmm. I am urging you to keep the strategic plan where the city of Condon, um, still receives strategic investment funds. And I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples of what we've used it for. So when you drive down Main Street of the city of Condon. All those facades improvements that were done from two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen were paid for by the SIP funds. Um. It's a complicated of how we did that. We use the SIP funds and waste management funds to do some infrastructure projects. And in the meantime, we spent that money on that project. The second one too is the housing baseball field project. So we came in and got a grant from, on the capital improvement grants, which I am hoping that housing is still. Going to be important on that one also too. But the baseball field project, we came in and got a two hundred and some thousand dollar grant to put in infrastructure at the baseball field. Divided it out, made six slots. Currently, we have two single-family homes. We have two duplexes that are occupied, two homes that are occupied, and we have two fourplexes that are about to be rented this year. So when we came in and got the grant, it was about two hundred and some thousand from the county and we put in a hundred and eighty thousand of our money to get that infrastructure in. That money will be paid back to us as the city within seventeen to twenty years. On taxes that are being collected to the city of Condon. I didn't go in and look and see what the tax rate is for the county. But I am guessing your two hundred thousand dollar investment will also be refunded based on those taxes that are going to be collected in that neighborhood. So I'm just urging you to go by what you heard at your town halls, what you have in your street strategic plan, and please keep the south end, Gill, or the cities. Arlington, I think, would be in the same boat, um, that we would get still a portion of the SIP funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Shadowitz.
Actually, I am not presenting today. I will be honest, I signed on the wrong note, so.
All right, thank you. David Greiner.
Would this be the time to talk about the importance of SIP funds going towards Summit Springs Village?
Um, you can address that if you'd like, yes.
David Greiner, Mayville, and I sit on the floor for Summit Springs Village. And I just want to express. How important Summit Springs Village is to Gillum County. And how important and how appreciative we have been in the past for grant monies that come. That the court has given. Uh, we've received. When I say we, Summit Springs Village has received operational support grant money, capital investment grant money, and special projects grant. Uh. Is it my understanding that you're considering taking away wages, salaries, and benefits from the SIP as far as those grants?
I think what you might be addressing is the, the grant process.
So this is the improper time for this?
Okay, I brought you up here.
All right, I'll just keep going then.
Yeah.
Uh, our budget for twenty twenty-five for Summit Springs Village was one point four million. The wages and salaries and benefits was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's fifty-seven percent of our budget for the wages. Uh, Summit Springs Village has twenty-seven employees. And I know the importance of becoming self-sufficient and through the direction of Hannah Bass. Who I might add just had a, uh, deficiency free state survey, which is just so commendable. And that place is just, it's a wonderful place. And we, they employ twenty-seven employees. And, uh, those people aren't getting rich by any means, and I wish we could give them a hundred dollars an hour. The starting wage for employee at Summit Springs Village starting is seventeen dollars per hour. And they take care of our most prized possessions. Uh, and, uh, I just want you to consider when you get to that item. To, I implore you to not take away. The money for the wages for those hardworking people. So that's, anyway.
Thank you.
Good bet.
Say it.
Thank you. All right, Darren Cavanagh.
Good morning, Darren Cavanagh. I'm with Avenged Power. And my address is seven four one seven Southwest Addie Lane in Portland, Oregon. Um, and I'm here to discuss the potential investment in the upgrade of the existing Leaning Jennifer to be wind farm. Um, this is an asset that's been operating in the county for almost fifteen years now, and we're assessing an opportunity to significantly upgrade that infrastructure facility. The investment would be between a hundred and seventy million and a hundred and ninety million to catch more wind, make the project more efficient, and extend the life of the project. Uh, we think it's very important for the county in ensuring that continued infrastructure investment takes place, that our long-term jobs that are in the county are protected and remain over an extended period. We think there's at least twenty-five years of additional life if we're able to do the upgrades that we plan, um, for the repower. Um, and I think the construction works associated with the repower are also very beneficial for the county. I think we see an injection, like I said, of a hundred and seventy to a hundred and ninety million. That full mobilization will bring up to two hundred, um, contract workers with highly skilled electrical workers, excavation, civil works, disposal works. So we think that's also a big potential benefit for employment in the county. And, um, obviously, those contractors and workers will be using county services. Um, the SIP is very important to this potential investment for Avenged. I think the investment climate right now is uncertain, and so anything that we can do to, um, have certainty around long-term costs for a project is, is very beneficial. So this could be very important to our investment decision in proceeding with it. And I think by considering this, I should, I should have started with, thank you for considering this and, and thank you for getting us to the point where we have an opportunity to present this. Um, and by considering it and, and approving this, you're, you're making, uh, Gillum County a competitive place for continued infrastructure investment, which I think is great. Uh, and balancing economic growth with new investment, retaining long-term jobs and bringing community benefit in the form of, local improvement payments and community service funds. So I think I'll leave it at that.
Great. So I had a couple of questions. I just was like, how, how long was that existing project there before you have to repower it? Like, it's, it's been in operation for?
Almost fifteen years. I think the C, the original COD was in early two thousand eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're reaching a point where it's time for a technology upgrade. And, you know, we're an operator with a lot of experience with projects. And as they get to the fifteen to twenty-year mark, you start to get a lot more maintenance issues. They become more difficult to keep online. So we're seeing, making these investments a little bit early helps reduce those maintenance costs. And obviously, it's an opportunity for us to, like I said, catch more wind.
So do they, they go up and they replace the, um, at the top of the turbine?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to be replacing all the major components within this nacelle. So we're going to be changing out the rotor, uh, and the main shaft. So that'll be a longer, longer blades for the project, which is the key to catching more wind and getting more production. Well, we're also changing out, uh, the gearbox and refurbishing the generator. So, yeah, those are the, the big pieces for the investment.
And this looks like you'll get another hopefully fifteen to eighteen years after this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, that's right. I, I want to get twenty-five. Um, but yeah, at, at least fifteen to eighteen, I'm definitely comfortable with that.
Right. Thank you. You and I have talked a lot. We don't really get to talk anymore.
Yeah, and I don't know if Professor Wilkins is, is on the home as well, but.
Yes, um, did you want Tom to come up with you or?
I can come up to answer any questions or?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any separate.
Yeah, um. Let's go ahead and finish those who need to speak, and then I'll ask the assessor if he has anything to speak. So we'll have Tom Russell come up? If you have anything to add, you don't?
No additional at this time. I'm, yeah, I'm signing the.
You're the tax and money person for Avenged, okay?
That's right.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and Chet Wilkins, Gillum County Assessor, did you have anything to add? Not on? Okay, all right.
I'm here, hold on.
Okay.
We're here.
All right, um, do you have anything to add? We're in the public hearing at this time.
The only thing I would add that, um, our experience working with Darren and Tom has been much better than what we've expected or experienced with Avenged in the past, and we appreciate, you know, how they presented themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Professor Wilkins.
And I would also like to, um, state this was, this was on my desk when I walked in the door on June eleventh. In a, in a very volatile time for Gillum County, so we took this on. It's taken months to work through this, to get up to speed with Business Oregon, who, um, Art Fish has been very helpful in walking us through the process. We've had the agreement reviewed by legal counsel. It's fully vetted. Um, there was a lot of back and forth with, um, Mr. Cavanagh and, and I to get to this point. Um, it's a good agreement. It'll help the community. I think that, um, we, we made good strides. So the problem with the SIP agreements, I will tell you, is they're fifteen years old. One of my goals is I'm going to leave with, with the understanding that there will be SIP agreements in, in the future when I'm done with this job. And I leave good notes for the people coming on, because the last time there was a SIP agreement here was in two thousand sixteen. And then being fifteen years old, um, there's no information of, uh, how negotiations take place and how the process works. And it does evolve through legislature, and there are changes that occur. But I just want to say that, um, that's something I hope to leave. All right, um, is there any other public comment?
I didn't sign up.
Okay. Have you signed, and then we have to turn this into Business Oregon as well, so. So, um, okay, first say your name and your?
Yeah, Tiffany Wilkins. Um, I'm with the operating engineer, seven oh one. I'm from Arlington, Oregon. We are in full support of Avenged, all the SIP that they bring. Um, we have got, um, Mortensen working up right now on the first, um, two A. And they have people from Fossil. They have people from Condon, Arlington, Hepner. There's a lot of local work going on up there, so we just, as seven oh one, want to show our support.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? The public hearing on the strategic investment program agreement with Leaning Jennifer Wind is now closed. Additional comment? We do have two motions before you. Do we have any other discussion with the agreement itself? We have an agreement and we have a resolution, so we'll have two motions. Um, the first motion is in your packet and it's under five point O. There's a suggested motion. I move to approve the strategic investment program agreement with Leaning Jennifer Wind Power to LLC as presented.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the strategic investment program agreement with Leaning Jennifer Wind Power to LLC. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we have the resolution.
I'll move to approve resolution R two zero two five dash O three requesting the Oregon Business Commission exempt Leaning Jennifer Wind Power to LLC from property taxation under the strategic investment program as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution R two oh twenty-five O three. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I will say I do believe the resolution is a bit misleading because, um, we will get, um, a, a good return on the investment. So, um, although there's tax exemption, of course, we receive payments from the company. Thank you very much. We'll send everything to Business Oregon today. I'll be in touch with Art Fish. And is there anything else?
Um, no, yeah, I think we just need to assign, counter sign ahead of the.
Yes, we'll make sure that we get the agreement signed. Are you okay to stay till the end of the meeting? Will we do all of our signatures?
Yeah, that's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, uh, the second public hearing is regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five zero one for fiscal year twenty twenty-five twenty-six, Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment. This, um, the anticipation, this will be the first reading of that ordinance. We're going to open the public hearing. On, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five O one for the twenty-five twenty-six Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment. The public hearing is now called to order. The Gillum County Court will hear the public on this issue during the hearing. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the ordinance before the county court makes a decision. We want to hear from you, hear what you have to say, and provide your point of view. If you wish to comment on the hearing item, you will have the opportunity to do so. All persons commenting must be recognized by the judge. Speak, please speak clearly and slowly and state your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Are there any conflicts of interest? No conflicts of interest? Other than my brother's a weed master. Okay? Aye. We have a briefing in our packet. Is there any comments from the public on the ordinance? No comments? All right, I will then close the public hearing. We have a briefing in the, uh, oh, I, I just have a question. Is, or maybe that's not, is it always just seven cents a acre? Or is that?
The only way it can be raised is if the, I'm sorry, the county court raises it.
Okay.
Because it was set in nineteen thirty-six.
Oh, wow.
So.
I just wonder if there's ever a time that maybe?
About forty-five thousand a year. And hopefully gets taxes on the rest of it, kind of be made up of work that we do.
Yeah. Yeah, because according to this, it's forty-seven thousand.
Okay. I was looking at last year's.
Hey, are there any other comments? Okay?
I've not.
Uh, the hearing has been closed, and there is a suggested motion in the briefing. Actually, there will be two motion.
I'll move to ask the judge to perform the first reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash O one by title only.
I'll second the motion. It has been moved and seconded to ask Judge Padino to perform the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five O one by title only. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. I'm going to be okay, I'm going to read it by title only. In the Gillum County Court for the State of Oregon for Gillum County in the matter of a special weed assessment within Gillum County for fiscal year twenty twenty-five twenty-two six, ordinance number twenty twenty-five O one. Motion two is presented in the briefing as well. Close the number two.
Yeah, I move to accept the first reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash O one by title only and to schedule a second reading at a public hearing on April second, twenty twenty-five.
Seconding, it has been moved and seconded to accept the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five O one by title only to schedule a second reading of the public, at a public hearing on April second, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right, second hearing is on April second. Thank you. Seven point zero, unfinished business, updated unemployment transition, non-exempt employees. Brooklyn Griffith Finance Director will be addressing the court on this matter. She's online.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes.
Um, I guess I have to apologize because I do not think that I got the LOA, the LOA that we received from the union on Monday in your packets.
Okay, you're just providing an update, so.
So really, yes, I just have an update right now, um, if.
Okay, go ahead and give the update.
Um, really, the update is that we met with the LOA or with the union last Friday. They were in support of it. Um, they provided us with an LOA, uh, that just speaks to the wage schedule update, which was moving our hourly employees to salaried employees. The setback was the effective date that they currently have on the LOA. Right now, it says effective July one, twenty twenty-five. I think we're still trying to work that in a little bit earlier. With that being the absolute last date that it would occur, is there any input from you guys on the date that it occurs?
I have no input. I, I will look to you with your discussions with the union.
Okay, um, and then the second portion of that LOA is just the wage scale increase we proposed to her at that meeting. The three and a half percent, of course, which would not be approved and adopted until it went through the budget committee. But they were good with that three and a half percent, so that is the other portion of that LOA is the three and a half, three and a half percent COLA increase effective July one, um, which really doesn't, I'm just giving you that update because it's included on the same LOA as the, the salary change. But that's just something we do every year anyways. So really, I have other updates, sorry. We will work to create a policy based on the LOA from the union, which is also kind of what we were waiting for, just to see the terminology that they use. And then hopefully by the April second meeting, I will have both the LOA and something from the county side of things for the non-represented employees for you guys to review and approve.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your work on that. Okay, new business, eight point zero, eight point one is status update and funding request. Ashley Bayless, Arlington Community and Childcare. Come on up, Ashley.
All right. Hello.
I, I do want to state that in your packet is a written, uh, I'm sure you've all seen it, um, letter.
That I'll read off too.
Okay.
I added some more, and we have some new updates, so. Um, first, Arlington Community Childcare wishes to extend our heartfelt appreciation to our community and county court for their unwavering support as we navigate these growing pains. Um, your collaboration is vital to our success, and we couldn't achieve any of this without you. We are diligently working to stabilize our operations while addressing the challenges that come with our new license. Currently, we are collaborating with Amy Yabara, our licensing specialist, to secure exceptions and ensure our center meets the safety and needs of our community. And those exceptions are actually in, um, effect as of today. So those exceptions we ask for are, um, staffing, um, duties for a center versus, uh, the certified family is what we were previously, and now that we're a center. Um, so that, we ask for that exception for two months to get staff up to date. So I personally am not having to be there, um, open to close if there's an emergency. I do have a little one, stuff comes up. And so, um, we did get that approved. And, um, so we are fully staffed, and that is all good as well. Um, yeah, our team is fully staffed and we are focused, uh, now on enrolling more families, which right now we currently have five families, I believe, which is more than we have before. So I believe that was, uh, seven kids in total. Um, our max is sixteen. So things are looking up, yes. But we are still focused on that, and, um, however, due to our licensing, um, requirements and the demands of daily operations, we do need additional support to remain sustainable. Um, unfortunately, we face ongoing expenses essential for our continued operations such as groceries, legal fees, payroll for our trained and qualified staff, and supplies necessary to meet licensing standards for our curriculum. We didn't go with the route of buying a curriculum. We actually came up with a play-based curriculum, um, to save cost, and uh, we got that approved as well, and everything is running great. And everything is running great and smoothly. Um, so we are still being a play-based, um, center.
Okay.
Which, from the feedback of families and, um, community members, that's what they decided as well. Um, the board has also expressed the need for additional security cameras for the exterior, um, which adds another expense to our list. Ultimately, we are optimistic that with the county's support and our collaboration with the Kelly nonprofit group, we can refine our budget and improve our financial records to ensure our success and sustainability in the future. I also, um, am enrolled in a eleven-week class, uh, like a business cohort, cohort, um, in Hood River for, with the early childhood education, um, of childcare partners. And, uh, after that class, they will give, um, Arlington Community Childcare a five thousand dollar grant, which will help as well, um, and that starts today. Um, additionally, I'm seek, um, actively seeking other special project grants that could help fund our playground and other essential needs. My primary concern is that while we have significantly, significantly reduced daycare costs to make it more affordable, which is fantastic, I fear that without an increase in families and grants, all our other efforts might lead to a situation where we have to close down due to financial constraints and inability to support our staff.
Mm-hmm.
So, and the stuff I gave you, I gave our, um, pricing sheets. I don't know if you guys had them or... But the, um, part-time, so we do part-time, full-time, and hourly. Our part-time infant, um, cost, which is sixty-three to a hundred thirty-five hours, is four hundred, um, dollars a month. And these all include, um, meals and snacks, aid, toddler, um, part-time for fifty, preschool age, three hundred, school age, two fifty, full-time for infant is five hundred, um, toddler, four fifty, preschool age, four hundred, school age, three fifty. And then hourly, it's five fifty, five dollars, four fifty, and four dollars. And our, um, families have to be very happy with that. Um, it's been more affordable and they're very excited about that. Um, um, but this is why we come to you again to ask for additional immediate funding. We believe that with your continued support, we can overcome the financial hurdle, hurdles and secure a bright future for Arlington Community Childcare. Your investment in our center is an investment in the children and families of our community. By providing us with the necessary funding, you're helping to create a nurturing and safe environment where children can learn, grow, and thrive. We understand the importance of transparency and accountability, and we are committed to using any additional funds wisely and effectively. Our goal is to ensure that every dollar contributes to enhancing the quality of care and education we provide. We are confident that with the county's backing, along with our dedicated staff and community partners, we can achieve sustainability and continue to serve our community with excellence. Thank you for considering our request and for your ongoing support. Um, I wrote some more, um. We are continually investing in our staff's professional development. Um, we are all going to a, it's on a Saturday, to a, um, conference for childcare. So we're continually, um, taking classes and getting up to par with all of this. Um, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the trust and support you have shown us. It is the community, this community spirit that fuels our determination to overcome any obstacles and keep moving forward. Together, we can build a brighter future for Arlington, community childcare, and all those entities. Um, so that's what I have written down. Um, I did give you a rough budget of what our expenses have come up. Um, I had to do that at the deadline, so it was a little, very rough, um.
So in order for you to, um, operate through, um, what would be through June.
Mm-hmm.
Well, probably through July, because if, if we, you know, with our funding, um, we would, um, grant those in August.
Mm-hmm.
Between now and then, we can...
I know, but what do you, you're, you say?
Oh, yeah, you're making, yeah, funding requests, so what is that?
So what I, um, from what I was talking, I think I was talking with Brooklyn and, um, the other previous meeting, I believe, I don't know if it still is in play, but there was money still aside from us. And I believe there was still left over, and so I don't know if we're able to.
Yeah, so what are you requesting to get you through those?
Yeah.
Three months.
So we have requested this, so we got the seventy-five, I believe.
Right.
And that, um, by paying the bills and stuff, we, um, really helped us out for a couple months, but I do think if there is the two hundred thousand left, that we could use that. We are, have legal fees that have come up, um, we are suggesting, have, so, they have suggested that we get, um, a forensic audit to clean up our books and all of that, and so there is other large expenses. Um, but that will hopefully hold us there and to keep our staff and not have to go back to ground one again.
Okay, so, so Brooklyn, are you still on? It's Brooke.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, she said. So the seventy-five thousand, was that from the grant cycle before?
Uh, yes, that, so the seventy-five thousand was what was remaining from FY twenty-four. Um, in FY twenty-five, an application was submitted.
Then we approved additional grant, grant amounts this last grant cycle.
It was never, it was, the grant application, um, was never pushed through the committee and reviewed and was never presented to you guys to be reviewed. So there was never funds, um, officially, uh, you know, approved to be funded to the Arlington Learning Center, but there is two hundred and twenty thousand remaining in the FY twenty-five operational support budget, which was kind of earmarked for Arlington Childcare. But no, there was never an official.
And then when everything happened, we just put that.
Yes.
So, I, I commend you guys for, I, I, as the board stepped in, they cleaned everything up. You got your licensing going, um, I, everything, I, to me, you're going in the right direction now.
Thank you.
Thankfully, so, um, I don't have a problem with releasing the grant funds to them. I...
I am one person.
Okay. I don't either, but they didn't, um, complete a grant, uh, we didn't go through our end of the process, so, um, I would like us, just out of a matter of fairness, make sure that we go through, um, the entire process and actually grant the funds, um, at our next meeting after it goes through the committee and they file an, uh, uh, completed application.
Okay, so I'm confused what happened to the original one that we just...
I think we don't have the same people in place now, so their goals have changed and they're, I think it was...
I did, um, recently, when I took over as the director, I did, um, submit an application.
Okay, so would that one still be current?
Yes.
Okay. I think it should go before the grant committee and then come back to us on, on April second, unless you think we should just go ahead and approve it. I just haven't seen it. Um, I, I...
From looking at their financial stuff, they're in a dire situation.
Yes, we need something to them.
I mean, I'm not gonna leave the place, but my staff will, you know, so it's like...
This is what I think we should do. We could give them fifty thousand dollars emergency funding and then have, that would get them by. And then we make sure we look at the application and approve, approve it for how it's written. How does that sound?
I'm not.
And we could, we need the fifty thousand now. How does that sound?
Sounds good. I have, I just have one more question too. You were talking, there's still some legal stuff to, to get taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Any idea on the time and?
Um, it's...
Dollars on that?
Yeah, they're, they're closing out now. I don't know if you guys have any, we have to be careful with what you said, but...
I can speak to it a little bit. Uh, Jeremiah Rogers, a board member for Arlington Community Care, live out of Iowa, Oregon. Um, I have been in touch both with the attorney and the Chair of Activities Division, uh, which I asked them to do, uh, an audit of us when I first came on board. Uh, and the Department of Justice Chair of Activities Division did start that, uh, process. As of their last speech out, from the beginning, they said it's not a short process. It's a lengthy thing. Uh, they wanted to go over all of our books for the last few years to see if there's any variances, if there's any issues. They are at least over halfway through that project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they intend to start conducting interviews soon. The bank originally recommended that we do a forensic audit when, uh, when I came on board. Uh, they were asked if there was any issues and they said that they thought that there was and that they should at least have it looked at for transparency. The attorney that we hired for, uh, counseling on, on the issue, also recommended that if we could get a forensic auditor in touch with the non, Kelly nonprofit group, that those would be able to work together to, to speed this whole process up and get everything lined out and, and accountable and sensible.
Okay, just to cover our faces and start fresh, really. And we're at the end of it, is what I see, so I'm finally seeing the light of the tunnel, so I feel good about it. Yeah, and I'm more confident with our board and our staff than I ever have been, so.
Just making sure we get cleared up, so.
Right, so it's behind.
Yep.
So...
It just, uh, because we don't want them to have to shut their doors.
No, that was not a problem.
No.
Really aside.
I would also like to say thank you for your effort. I know you, you've all worked very hard for the community of Arlington, so thank you. Um, because it's gonna build a great foundation under us when more employment comes, so good.
Absolutely.
That's great. Um, so...
And I just want to add one more. I'm, we're building it to, with us being a center, and I have no plans of leaving, but if I were to leave, it wouldn't be shut down again like it would. Um, we're making it where we have all of our decks in a row, we have all of our paperwork, and everyone and anyone can see it, um, that needs to, so.
All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Is there any other comments before, um, so, we want to release the fifty thousand now and then, um, have the grant application presented to us at the April second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or maybe even a motion. I move to release fifty thousand dollars to the Arlington Childcare for emergency funding and then have them review the grant process with us.
I will second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to provide emergency funding to the Arlington Childcare with a grant application before the county court of the April second meeting. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yes. Okay, item eight point two, refill resolution twenty twenty fourteen. This was a housekeeping item. Um, this, this was, uh, uh, going through all of our ordinances, orders, and, um, all of the documents. Um, we found, uh, it's, it was a resolution, um, regarding, um, a state of emergency of Gillen County in response to COVID-nineteen. So we reached out to the legal counsel to see if we, um, needed to, what we needed to do with this. And so we, the recommendation was that the, um, the ordinance, or excuse me, the resolution, um, be repealed. So it is in front of you in R twenty twenty five oh two, and there is, in the briefing, a suggested motion.
You have any questions about it?
Um, the only thing I was gonna ask you is, um, I know we talked about the, the ARPA funds before and that we have to expend them by the end of this year. Um, I had somebody ask me if, if the ARPA funds weren't, um, earmarked for something within the county, it, would the federal government come back in and then take them back?
We checked the box that they could be used for any expense, and without me looking back on it, um, because we checked that box, um, if for some reason expenditure were not allowed, we could use it on general fund expenditures, so we would not have to return those funds. And that reporting will take place, I believe, in the month of April. Okay, so, yes.
I didn't know if we just needed to say, yes, we're gonna spend it, and this is where we're gonna spend it.
Yeah, so, okay. When you get into the portal, it's very, um, specific of, um, um, the projects they've already earmarked. The, the childcare expansion was part of it, the Convent Early Learning Center, excuse me. And there were some Norcore funds, and, um, and then if, if anything goes awry with those expenditures, we can use it for general fund expenditures. We do not have to return them. I, I had to do quite a bit of research to figure out how to do this, um, with other counties, and, um, the important thing was that we did check that box, okay, so.
And so we could use it for...
Funds that would be allowable to use for the daycares too.
It could.
And just like Arlington's.
Yeah, right.
Could be used as emergency funds for that.
Right.
Um, and for some reason, if, if they rejected something, because they can reject an expenditure, we could use, um, the food pantry, we could use the meal site, we could use law enforcement, things like that. The fact that we built the building showed, um, the fact that, you know, for law enforcement, um, social distancing, those things that, that, um, were a part of the COVID response. Okay? I move to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash oh two as presented.
I will second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded, um, to approve resolution R twenty twenty five oh two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. All right, eight point three, consider approval of amended competitive grant backlog. Okay, we're gonna open it up for discussion, and let's begin. Um, Brooklyn, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, so walk us through the information, and then we're going to take public comment on this.
Okay.
And also, would you please walk, walk through, uh, the process of the, of the, um, grant review?
Yes. Um, I guess just to start off, we've, we, there have been, since, since the new court administration has come into play, there have been a lot of conversations had throughout the winter, um, regarding the current grant guidelines, uh, capital investment, operational support, and special projects, specifically those three. Uh, we've had a lot of good conversation regarding it. I think there's been a lot of input provided from, uh, community members and prior year applicants. Um, when we began kind of compiling that information, we did send out a very short, informal questionnaire to all prior grant recipients. I think we sent out thirty-seven, um, received about five back from folks, which provided good input. Uh, we took that information along with some of the other one-off conversations that had been having, um, been happening, excuse me, and then met with the Grant Review Committee, um, a few weeks ago, and just kind of put our heads together and came up with these, this, these proposals based on conversations that have been had. Um, anything regarding that, I guess, what would you like to know about the process? I can go over that at the end. Right now, my intention is just to go, I'm just gonna go through this, the proposals right now, and we'll just go, you know, I'll just, I'll read a line of what we changed, and if there's any, um, further discussion on, um, a certain point, we can just stop and, I guess, talk more about that, if that works.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so we'll just go into what we, what we kind of provided for the capital investment grants. A large overview of that is just broadening the focus of the capital projects, removing that specificity on housing developments, early education, and shovel-ready industrial lands. Um, we're just opening it back up to capital projects, you know, to, to any nonprofit taxing district or government entity that has a capital project within Gillen County, come forward with that. Um, that's, that's kind of the biggest change here in the capital investment grant lines. But some other things were just in the eligibility criteria for nonprofits. Um, and then we added an additional requirement for successful nonprofit organizations, which is just providing proof, um, of their, their federal standing as a nonprofit. Again, eligible grant uses, we just removed the specificity on housing developments, early education, um, and infrastructure projects on industrial lands. Again, this is not saying that those projects are no longer eligible. That is just saying we removed the specifics of those being the only projects we're gonna fund and, and opening it back up is the... of those being the only projects we're going to fund and, and opening a backup is the proposal.
Can I, can I ask one question at this point in time? With, and then the focus was narrowed. It was limited to last fiscal year and our current fiscal year, correct?
I believe it was in two thousand and twenty-two that the guidelines changed to, to narrow it down to.
Okay, all right.
Just those ones.
Okay.
Uh, another big thing that comes with removing those, the, the housing and the childcare is that our suggestion is to update that match funding requirement to twenty-five percent for all capital projects. Um, prior, there was just some differings, you know, it was like fifty percent, thirty percent, twenty-five percent. But now the suggested proposal is, um, is at twenty-five percent across the board. Uh, the other part of the funding process, I guess, is that, um, we're looking, we're suggesting to update the grant period to be determined by the project's complexity, um, which, and furthermore mean funds should be claimed and or expended within two fiscal years. Currently, how it reads is that, uh, funds should be expended by the end of the fiscal year that they're, they're awarded. So say somebody applies right now, technically their grant ends on June twenty twenty-five. So they have to come back before the account, uh, the, the county court requests an extension, which historically the county has approved those extensions with no issue. Um, but with this proposal, we're hoping to kind of eliminate those back and forths. And we'll just have those conversations with applicants as they come in depending on their project complexity, whether we want to end that, that agreement in this fiscal year or push it out to the next fiscal year, if that makes sense. Any questions there? Or on anything more? Perfect. Um, the next portion is just.
I think just part of that problem was the fact that when the money wasn't getting spent in the grant cycle, we, there wasn't good accounting of what we still had or, you know, left.
What was left.
But I think we, we've alleviated that problem, right, Brooke?
Yes, absolutely. We have, we have put some, uh, processes in place that, um, have made things a lot more efficient and, and we're staying on top of that and working with grant recipients, um, just to check in on their projects. And we, and we know what is still outstanding between the fiscal years.
Yeah, because, because sometimes projects with all the good intentions just take longer than.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, I mean, like the school districts, they can't do any work until summer on a lot of their projects. So they're, you know, already at a, um, a negative there, I guess, having to wait for that. But agreed with those. Um, another step that would kind of help with this is the next one, the review process. We're also proposing, uh, two grant cycles for the capital projects, um, for the upcoming fiscal year. I think we have dates lined out just so that people who have these projects can better plan for said projects. Um, when those applications come into the county court, we're, we're kind of proposing a two-month window be open for applications to come in, for folks to come to, to talk to the county courts, uh, have those op, open conversations with us. And then we review them twice a year, which also just gives us kind of a better idea of, of how much we've spent in comparison to our budget. Um, that's our proposal. Uh, kind, that's kind of a big change as well because right now they're reviewed on a rolling basis as they come in. But the suggestion would be two cycles.
And, and the reason that happened was because when it was open, nobody would apply. And then it felt like that, you know, maybe as good ideas came along, that we were missing an opportunity to invest in them because we had such a closed-up window of when they could apply. So they were missing out on it. And that was the reason we opened it. And I don't think there was a screaming amount of applicants for those projects.
No, and I, and I think, um, that, uh, that it needs to be known that even if it's for all entities and for all grants, that if you have a project or an idea, that they can always come to county court and talk to county court. They don't have to wait until a grant cycle is open, that, that funding is there. This is just the guidance that we're providing. But as what, as, as is, it should be or has always been, people can always come, even if it's in an off-cycle time and say, hey, we've got this project, this is our idea. We're kind of, we're pushed up a timeline or whatever and have those conversations with county court. We're not saying that. And I think that, um, folks just need to be aware that that we're open to these conversations and that they can come and talk to us. Yes, is what I'm getting at.
Can we put grant, can we put language in the, in grant applications that reflect that? That say, you know, these are our two open periods, but this is a process if you want to go outside of it. If you want to come to county court. I'd support that. Um, I think this would be a good time to bring up the, and I'm sorry to interrupt right in the middle of, but we're talking about spending and available funding. And through the budget process, I just think it's important to let the public know where we are sitting with our strategic investment fund um, agreements that we currently have in place. We, most of us are aware that Shepherd's Flat is our big agreement. And that one generates approximately over three million dollars a year. We have the budget year we're working on, our next budget year, and one more. And then we don't have that many anymore in strategic investment program agreements because that would be the fifteenth year. So that money will likely roll into taxes and likely, um, retain because that was a repower. So because the project was repowered, um, it will have more value than it had it not repowered. So, um, but we have no data. We have no data. The projects are valued by the partner revenue. There's a lot of unknowns. So I'm just making everyone aware that we're coming upon a time in history, we'll look back on this time ten years down the road and have a lot more information than we do today. So those are the things I'm looking at when I'm looking at the numbers. And we all knew that fifteen years from the time Shepherd's Flat Agreement came into play, that we would be, we would be here. However, some things did happen. These projects started to be repowered. Um, we have other agreements. But that's a huge amount of money and it's a huge project because we're only receiving about a million more than that currently. And some, uh, specific agreements, and we only have two agreements right now, aside from the new Oxford Agreement. We have Montag, which expires in two thousand thirty-five, and Shepherd's Flat. So Montag is a much, much, much smaller project. And, um, there was a component of that that was a special payment that ends this year, which is four hundred thousand dollars a year. So I had to really study all of this to see where we were, so I could explain it to you where we are. Um, so, go ahead, Brooke.
Um, okay, all right. The next, the next part is within the funding decision portion of the guidelines, um, this, our suggestion, suggestion is that applicants seeking over four hundred thousand dollars in funding on their capital projects, preferably come to county court or the Grant Review Committee and present in person on their project. So again, anything over four hundred thousand dollars in funding, come to county court in person and present on that. Um, the next thing is within the reporting section. This is just a, a suggestion that applicants may be provided signage from Gillum County that should be displayed at the site of the project. Something as simple as, uh, this project is being completed in part by funds granted by Gillum County. Or something like that, just to provide a little bit of recognition to Gillum County and the work that they're doing in our communities. Um, and the funding that they're providing in our communities. I think it's just a good recognition for Gillum County. That's our suggestion. Um, the next two are within the application in the attachment B. And these, this is across the board. So this is for capital, operational, and special projects. Um, within the application, it'll just be, we're suggesting a requirement of showing proof of incorporation for nonprofit organizations. And then also setting the volunteer hourly rate, um, for in-kind matching to be Oregon's non-urban minimum wage, um, or for specialized skills, their actual wage. That's everything for capital investment grant guideline updates. Is there, are there any questions, concerns, thoughts on specifically the capital investment grant guidelines, application or attachments?
Judge Pat Nod, Brooklyn. This is Sherri Wilkins, Grant Committee member.
Perfect.
Yes.
And I'd like to just jump in for a minute and address, um, some of the concerns that we've heard about. Um, all the money goes to the south, uh, end of the county and not the north. And I just want to clarify that, um, this is a grant application process. And if the people don't apply for these grants, then they can't be awarded. And, and I'd like for our nonprofits, um, and, and the other entities that are eligible to look more into this and, and continue to use these funds. They're there and, um, we want to broaden the scope of the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions on the grant, the capital project?
Yeah, as we go through them, so, yeah.
Or do you want to wait until after?
I think as we go, uh, it would probably be better. Um, one point of clarification I want to make is the capital investment grants and the operational support grants are derived from strategic investment program funds. That's how Gillum County long ago chose to spend some of their money that's budgeted. The, um, north and south and special projects money comes from waste management. So just wanted to make sure. So I'm going to allow, um, Catherine Brighter to ask her question right now.
I've got just a few on the capital projects. And so the way it's written out without it being tied to goals, is it a first come, first served? And how are you going to rank them when you're not applying them to specific housing, childcare, or things like that? And my last one, this is, I, I just find it, it is going to be extremely subjective. And people are, and if it's going to be first come, first served. My other thing too is your two-year thing on a, on a capital improvement project. If it's a large capital improvement project and this is just part of the funding, that's not enough time. Um, if you're going to go out for funding, such as like, we're going to go out for a pool here, maybe shortly, it's going to take us longer than two years to gather all of our funding to do a multi-million dollar project, just so you know that. That's what.
Thank you.
I think I can speak to a couple of those. The, um, still, still can always come back and file a request and extension. That's no problem on your, the capital projects. We're not saying they need to be spent within that two-year period, just, um, kind of extending that end date for some projects. It might be more helpful. But always the opportunity to come back and request that extension, um, on capital projects. And then I, I do see that we removed specifically the wording for number two in our, goal number two in our strategic plan, which is still where the focus lies. But that's, that is a good point. Thank you, Catherine.
Well, so I, I guess my question is, is are you tying it to your town hall things that you're coming up? Are you getting into the strategic plan?
Um, I think, um.
When we write a grant, I mean, you guys have all written grants. I've written grants. You tie it to a specific thing to show you're meeting that goal with the money. So my, my ultimate question is, I guess, is how are we supposed to tie this request to this grant?
Okay. I'll, I'll just say, my thoughts on it and the other commissioners, prior to two years ago, it was completely opened up. Two years ago was when it was narrowed to the specific. So there were criteria at that point. Is that correct, Brooklyn, from the records you've found? That we have.
Yes.
Criteria.
And the, the merit review, um, criteria is still the same. It is still, you know, number one being the benefit to the community, whether that's economic development, cultural and historical preservation, community and essential services. Second being matched funds leveraged, and then also the timeliness and the need for the funding. Those are still the same, uh, merit criteria didn't change there. Um, just that specific specificity on what the capital projects were to be is what changed.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Okay, we are now going to move on to operational support grant, grant guidelines, application attachments, and any amendments that we have there. Uh, again, just the overall was that we broadened the focus of the investments, removing that specificity on housing developments, early education access and health, healthcare services. Not eliminating those, just opening it up. Eligibility criteria, the same. Um, we added clarity on nonprofit organizations and that additional requirements for successful nonprofits, meaning their proof of incorporation. Eligibility criteria, removed all the housing, early education, healthcare requirements, allowable grant funds. All right, the next two are the ones that we aren't necessarily proposing, we'd like to have conversations on. Uh, this one is the allowable grant fund uses. Consider the removal of employee salaries and benefits that are part of the allowable grant fund uses.
This, this is where I have the huge problem. Because I, as a business owner, I, even if I look at my own personal business, we, we pay forty percent of our income to wages in our business. And that's not paying any benefits. So if we were paying benefits, we'd be looking at between sixty and seventy percent. When I was on the school board, the, it was over eighty percent was wages and salaries and benefits for, um, so whenever you had to make cuts, you had to cut staff. If you look at just the Arlington childcare stuff that was in our packet alone, they had twenty-eight thousand dollars in one month of expenses. Five thousand of that was for an attorney. If you take that out, that's twenty-three thousand. Their wages were fifteen thousand and their income was thirteen hundred. So unless other stuff comes in, the only place they can cut is staff. So I, I just don't, I don't think we can do this to our nonprofits. I just have a huge problem with it. My thoughts were to allow it for childcare. But, um, anyway, let, let's see if there's any, are, are there any grant committee members that can speak to us about that? Because, um, I'd like to hear if they're on the, on the line.
This is Sherri Wilkins, Grant Committee member. And, um, Brooke, you correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I think one of the grant committee's concerns was, um, you know, one of the big things years ago, or a, a few years ago, was sustainability. And if an entity can't sustain their, um, pet, their staffing without outside support, then we were concerned that maybe they had gotten overstaffed or they had gotten bigger than their business or their nonprofit was able to support. And, and that's where our thinking is. We just, what, we don't, we're all about funding projects, but to fund the infrastructure of your business seemed, um, unsustainable. And.
So it makes me confused, Sherri, because you, so say this sustainability plan requirement is kind of one of the things you guys removed or recommending removing. But, um, another thing I would like, I, it just came to the top of my head. I, I remember when, um, we had PAs in Condon for years that ran our clinic. And then they all retired and we had to get new ones. And the new ones were like, uh, I don't want to work for that amount of money. So the health district came to the county to get additional funds to help prop up those PA salaries so they could actually attract somebody into the community. So I just, I, I, I just don't think that it would be a good idea to remove that at all.
I hear your point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, just to let the people online know, we have some people in the audience who wanted to speak, so I'm going to address them. And I believe, um, you were first and then I'll get over to the early learning. Just a moment. Go ahead, Jess. Oh, sorry. Did you have, he had his hand up a long time ago and we missed it. Sorry. And then I'll go to Hannah and then we'll go to the early learning.
For about capital grants, or maybe this conversation's proceeding without, about employees. Go ahead and proceed with that one.
Okay, don't let us forget to come back to you, okay? Okay, go ahead, Hannah.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to speak on the wages parts of the nonprofit. As you guys know, you do support us every year. It's operational, right? We only ever request seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, but it is a large portion, as David stated earlier, of our budget. It's like fifty-seven percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I took the job at Summer Springs five years ago, April first.
Yeah.
And we have made
Yeah.
Huge strides in the way that it's ran and performed. And, you know, paying our people to be there, we employ twenty-seven people in Condon. Um, that's a huge amount for Condon, as we know. And we still, you know, we operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Our business, we're, we don't close. There's somebody on staff all the time. So to be able to pay these people to care for other people's lives and be there twenty. care for other people's lives and be there twenty-four hours a day, you know, we can't just be short-staffed and shut down. That doesn't happen in our business and in healthcare. So I just think it's really important for everybody to think about that. In a small community, we did just receive a deficiency free state survey. We're one of the best facilities in Oregon, and I think that the operations grant is a huge asset to our wages, to keep our staff and pay them well, to continue to go on such a positive path.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And I do, I just wanted to hear a why, which I think Sheri kind of explained the thought behind that.
Right.
But I am going to advocate, kind of on Leah's side with, I just think it's a bad idea right now for nonprofits and our businesses that are doing well in the community.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a, it's a national thing that it's between forty to eighty percent that businesses and nonprofits run with their employers, or as employees, with employees and benefits. So it's a huge part of every business. That's why on the grant thing, it was at the top. Okay, so it was so big. Sarah?
I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Hannah said, and just can speak about nonprofits, especially here in rural towns. People expect it to be, you know, public accessible, affordable, and we try to meet those needs, even at our own expense, right? And the majority, especially healthcare clinics, Summit Springs, us, we rely a lot on federal dollars, even though they don't really make up a lot. And it does not cover income or aside, it does not cover expenses. It covers about fifty-three percent for us personally, our payroll, not including anything else. So this just, this redundancy of like trying to meet the public needs, yet trying to be a sustainable nonprofit, which is for our sector, it's never going to happen, especially with the uncertainty of federal funds. We don't know what the three-year, four-year, five-year plan is going to look like. So that's when I feel like counting investment is super important to keep these things close so that people don't move and try to find that elsewhere.
And?
The Andrews, Director of the Early Learning Center. Same same information. I have some numbers for you if that helps at all. And also, I just kind of want to think about, my grandpa once told me, like, certain restaurants and things like that in Condon and Arlington struggle because of our population issues. So having these things that we have, like a health center, childcare center, and Summit Springs, those are a luxury with our low population. It's hard to keep businesses sustainable, period, especially when you're talking about medical supplies, diapers, licensing regulation, things like that, to keep that standard of care there is simply more expensive than our community members can actually pay into on their own salaries. For instance, if we were if we were not allowed to use our operational grants towards payroll, we would only have about, we would have an ask maybe last year of around seventy-five thousand dollars, and that would put us in a hole of about two seventy-seven. And if we were to spread that out amongst community slots, that would be a minimum of two thousand three hundred and seven dollars for a community payer. And that's if we were filling twelve slots, community slots. They simply wouldn't be able to pay that, and we would close. That's how devastating that would be. So I just, I just want to be real clear on that, what that would look like.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, should we go back to Brooklyn to continue on? Do we have any questions?
We have two people online with their
Okay.
race, Damon Holland.
Yeah, oh, I'm I'm Damon Holland. I work as an outpatient mental health therapist for Community Counseling Solutions, serving Condon and Arlington. I want to preface this by saying that my wife is a teacher at the Condon Early Learning Center, and I work really closely and collaboratively with the amazing and valued community partners at the health clinic and Summit Springs. In kind of reviewing these potential changes, and while I do think that there's a benefit from widening potential focus of grant funding as a general principle, I don't think that this is an appropriate time to do so. It's not, not a secret that vitally important community resources, such as Summit Springs, the Early Learning Center, and the Health Center. I don't feel like it makes sense to broaden the scope and also narrow the focus when those foundational services don't have clarity and probably sufficient confidence that they are going to be funded long-term. And and it's been previously mentioned today, and everybody can more effectively sing the praises of each one of these organizations. But the salaries and the the income of the people that are actually working is one of the largest budget items, and it's I I'm pretty much against anything that potentially threatens these foundational services that support some of our most vulnerable populations in children, elders, and anybody seeking medical healthcare. So while I think that the broadening could be a potentially good thing to do, not at the same time as narrowing the focus of how that funding can be used. I just don't want it to hurt the things that we already need to fund for potentially something else that might be able to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Daylene as well. Okay. Daylene Selby?
Wilson, yes.
Wilson, excuse me.
And actually, I apologize. This is, I'm on Daylene Wilson's computer, but this is Lisa Helms, and I'm the administrator at the South Gillum Health Center, and also a recipient of the operational grant. And I'm just, I just want to reiterate what others have said about how it's really difficult, I guess, to find other funding that actually allows for paying salaries. And as Leah said, our clinic, we do have two really great PAs. And I think without the support of the operational grant, it would be difficult to try to keep two PAs. And furthermore, at the clinic, we really operate on a pretty, pretty few staff. We don't even employ medical assistants. The PAs do their own medical assistant work, such as taking the vitals, and all of us actually pitch in to clean rooms and things like that. So I think that I just hope that the grant committee considers that, and our clinic is pretty, I wish I had statistics for you at this point, but I kind of, this was kind of a quick thing that I didn't, I wasn't paying attention to. So please just consider that. Our clinic is very vital to our community. We serve patients not only in Condon, but other communities as well. And as a special district, we get less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the taxes, which is unique. And so please just consider that when you're making your decision.
Thank you. Brooklyn, back to you.
Okay. Do, I guess, our, I guess we'll just move past that proposal, and we can revisit that. Do you guys want to further discuss?
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big issue today, and we will be talking about that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is Sheri Wilkins again. Let's keep in mind that the grant committee is only making recommendations to the county court, and the county court will make the ultimate decision on what these grants, how they're read. So just to be clear.
Okay.
And I do, I hear every one of you, and I understand. Thank you.
Right. Okay. We do have a person who raised their hand in the audience here, so.
I just have one more thing to add.
It's Ashley Bayless, Arlington.
Childcare, yeah. If that were the case, our only options right now would be to raise our prices to where no one can
Right.
afford it, cut the staff, and eventually we would have to close because no one is going to.
Right.
Realize that.
Thank you. Okay, Brooklyn.
Okay, all right, moving right along. The next one was in the general guidelines. Initially, what you guys have in front of you states, applicants should provide proof of seeking at least two additional funding sources with redirection or approval notices in their application. Since, I guess I've talked a little bit more with the grant committee members since then, and our new suggestion would be applicants should just just provide proof of seeking at least two additional funding sources, whether that's like listing who they applied through, because it's under the impression that they don't always get a rejection or an approval notice when they may apply for grants. So that was a little change there from what was suggested. Within the general guidelines, we also are suggesting that in-kind contributions are made eligible for match funds, where previously in-kind was not an eligible match fund. The sustainability plan requirements, which does kind of fall in line with the conversations that are happening, we just suggested be removed entirely. Not sure they're seeing a lot of benefit from that portion of the application. Within the application itself, the removal of the financial health report and the removal of the financial sustainability plan. And then just updating again, as mentioned before, that requirement for approval of incorporation for nonprofit organizations. And then with that suggestion, and with the suggestion update of using in-kind funds, also just verifying the volunteer hourly rate being set to the Oregon non-urban minimum wage, or for specialized skills, the actual wage, which was across the board, the others. That, it was all of our proposed changes for operational support, grant line, grant guidelines, applications, and its attachments. And I guess there's not anything, but I want to make sure if there is anything, we talk about it before I move on to special projects.
Oh, Jen.
Jen, do you want to?
Want to go back to the?
I think I'll, I'll reserve that for conversation.
Okay. I hear everything that everyone's saying, and although I wasn't part of the county court, I can remember when a lot of these agreements started. So I'm just going to say a few things. There were concerns about these agreements ending way back when, and what would we do? And here we are. We do now know that it looks like some of these dollars will roll into property taxes that will sustain at their current level, but again, we do not know. So I caution everyone in their own operations about that, because we we need to, we need to be clear, and I think that I full disclosures best. We have, as I said, this budget year that we're working on now, coming up, and one more with Shepherd's Flat, which generates three million dollars, three million plus a year. These dollars we're talking about right here. So I just need to make sure we're all aware. We don't know how they're going to roll into taxes, but we're hoping that will be whole. And so I think that historically, although the people who were in in these seats at that time aren't here to speak to us, why they were concerned about the payroll and benefits, why they were concerned with, they didn't want to have to end someone's job because we provided a grant for so long for payrolls, payroll and benefits. And I believe that's the history there. Well, I think that is why they had the sustainability plan requirement in the grant process too, was so that people could actually be looking at how they were going to sustain themselves down the road after all those sun setting. Yeah. Okay. And so I I personally think the biggest issue is the salary and benefits for two specific strains of service that we have. It's childcare and healthcare. Now, would you say healthcare falls into what you're doing? Okay. I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I I would support amending the grant agreement on salaries and benefits to include childcare and healthcare.
Or moving, with the exception of these two.
Yeah, so on the the grant, now this is just my thoughts. It was in red. I wanted to.
It just says, consider removal of employee salaries and benefits. Wording could be removal of employee salary and benefits excluding childcare and healthcare services.
Well, then, you're just, you're going to have outfits that are going to come in and apply for them, and then they're just going to be creating accounting so that they can, yeah. You know.
Which is fine, I mean, if they.
They're going to pay for what they want to pay for. That's fine. That, then then we have history that shows what we paid for.
Yeah, and if they, and if they're able to juggle their accounting system to do that, then that's where they need to start.
I think that if it should, it should either be employee salaries and benefits across the board, or no employees and salaries and benefits across the board. Would be my thought there.
As a grant committee member, I don't have a problem with making that change. It was, it was a recommendation or suggestion. It wasn't something cast in.
Do you mean across the board, Sheri, or do you mean?
Yes, yes, just because that makes it simpler, and Leah's right. I'll just juggle things around until it works out for them. And I hear this, we are, we are in a county where services are expensive and wages are not compatible with those like childcare. And I took care of my mother for four and a half years because we could not afford to put her in to elderly care. So I totally understand.
I think it's really just the part of a bigger conversation that is already, that's already happening and people are having, and which is just that, as Judge Patton had mentioned, these things, sunsetting in the future, and the potential risk that there is when the county is funding folks' salaries and benefits for these entities. I think it's just a larger conversation to continue to have, to to figure out how we can work together to support these, these critical services within our community.
Right. And and this is really another conversation, because these are just the guidelines, but during the budget process, we really need to address the amount we're spending out of the strategic investment program. There's fifteen billion dollars tax carryover, and we're bringing in about four. We're giving some to each city. And we we need to be sure that we're only expending what we're bringing in if we want to preserve that balance, the balance forward. So that's just another thing that's on our end, but it's a big part of the equation. I wish the pocketbook was completely open and we could pay for everything, but we all have to make sure that we're protecting Gillum County's resources.
See, I'm down with the idea of work, even if it's inside accounts, just so monies can roll over and accrue interest so that, you know, or maybe not just us, but for anyone who is looking at.
The early learning sustainability line item is already in the economic enhancement ordinance, and that's twenty percent of about five million dollars.
And it's, and it rolls over and accrues?
At currently, yeah, it's, that will be part of what the budget committee is going to be discussing, how that, how that's going to be structured.
Okay. All right. So and I, the last thing, I, Brooke, I do think it's a good idea that on a special project grants to open two grant cycles. Because
Are we ready to go?
On the special projects, yeah. I think, I think that's a good idea, because I think, oh, a lot of times what happens is on the special projects, everybody's like, oh, I got to get that in, and then the yeah, they have to rush it and stuff, so. I definitely like that idea.
Okay, I guess I just want to finish that. So so we are going to not, we're going to keep employee salaries and benefits in the grant guidelines as of now. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we're here, that's what you're hearing.
I just want to make sure my notes I'm writing over here, right?
Right.
I'll just jump in. Oh, go ahead.
And then before I address somebody in the audience, I just wanted to clarify, are we all in agreement about opening up two grant cycles for the special projects, north and south end? Yes. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So it's touch base, I guess.
Well.
On the rest of the special projects, I didn't get to go through that. So the the other portions of the special projects are again, just that proof of incorporation, and then setting the volunteer hourly rate to the Oregon non-urban minimum wage. There really wasn't a lot of changes to the special projects, aside from There really wasn't a lot of changes to the special projects aside from the opening up of two grant cycles for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, as has been mentioned by the community. Having that feeling of it being heavily focused on the south. But really, the the same amount of funds go into these north projects bucket and the south projects bucket. Um, when we do two grant cycles, the fall grant cycle, the awards that we can do there will be based on what we're awarded in the spring. So people will just need to be aware of that and we will share. That the the current balance of the special projects for the north and the south when we post that fall cycle, just so that folks are aware that. You know, the south in past thirty thousand dollars that you can apply for, the north has two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars you can apply for.
Sounds great. Okay, somebody raise their hand in the audience.
Uh, Jeremiah Rogers, I am, um, so if you. You broaden from from the childcare and housing and doesn't that? Isn't that the lesson, the pie for those crucial programs? Um, I guess that's, that's how it sounded to me and I just, I just wanted to.
Prior to two years ago. These funds were available to any taxing district or nonprofit or other community. Partners in the, in the program in general. So that's their history. But um, it's. It's just been a recent, a recent decision in the last two years to narrow it down. And the documentation that I saw on that narrowing was that it would just occur on those, those two years. With an indication that it would open back up, but that's what we're, that's what we're doing. That's what we're considering. Any other thoughts?
I guess we could, we could talk about the proposed budget that we suggested. The proposed budget was to um have the competitive grants program. Be three million for FY twenty-six, which would be two million for the capital projects program and one million for the operational support program.
Which isn't spending more than we're earning each year because of the. Strategic investment program agreements we currently have.
That's all I have for the grant, um, for the updates that we're proposing. If there's any additional questions or anything, we're happy to answer.
How, how much right now is left in the capital projects grant?
Um, sorry, I just exited out of my spreadsheet. Let me open it. We budgeted for uh FY twenty-six and the prior year. Competitive grants, six point eight million. The operational support was at a million. So that puts us, right now remaining budget is three point eight for FY twenty-six.
I think what happened was.
Twenty-five, excuse me.
When the budget was prepared, the fact that. We weren't bringing the revenue in was not taken into account, that it, that a project ended. And in the budget, there was no account, it wasn't accounted for on the revenue side. So I think that's how we got. Uh, uh, or there may have been a, a decision made to spend some of that cash, cash reserve.
Well, I think we, we can tell that there were, there were big projects that came down the pipeline with the Connerly Learning Center and um. The port, they both had large requests that came in in the last fiscal years. And I think that they, they likely bolstered that competitive grant program to accommodate for some of those projects that were coming down, which. Those have been funded now, so our proposal was just to have that back down to where it was historic.
I, I, the only reason I'm asking you is because I, I didn't know if there was any flexibility between the competitive grant and the operational support grants. If, if, if we have an imbalance, you know, like we don't have hardly anybody that's asking for any capital projects, can we? Fund more of the operational or vice versa? I mean, is there any flexibility for that? Yeah, I think in the event that there's a um disparity in, in requests and grants, that we could um. Backfill the other one, um, because that's potentially, that's why we left the capital projects up open because. We weren't getting as many requests, right?
So you.
Move them around. That's what, that's what I was wondering. Yes, we can have some flexibility and not just rigidly say, this is it.
For any balances.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that the, the budget proposal is three million for the competitive grants program, which is operational and capital investment. The proposal is that there are two cycles, the first cycle being in the fall, the second being. Would actually be closing prior to when the operational grant cycle opened. So really, in an, in an ideal world, we would have already. Received the applications and awarded the funds for the capital investment grants, and then we would know what that remaining budget would be for the last, you know, for. For that, and that, that could feed into your next year's grant, but. It's, it's just, it's three million dollars and right now, and then the guidelines further from that are a million to operational, two million to capital projects, but I think you just leave way in there because it's technically one. One line item.
Right. Okay. Are we there? Do we, do we know? Yeah, so my, my little notes that I wrote is on the capital investment grant guidelines. I, I would like, I don't mind the. Outline two grant cycles for the upcoming fiscal year, but I would like to see the language. Uh, that, that the coming to the court was available, like we discussed. Um, I don't like the idea of the county sign being outside the projects, but that's just a personal thing. I do not want the. Removal of the employees and salary benefits from the operational. And I think that the sustainability plan requirement is a useful tool for the, for entities to. Try to figure out how they're gonna go forward when, like Chris said, our funds start going away on the SIP and we don't have as much. So. Those are my thoughts. Okay.
So just the sign, keeping that in, the. Employee salaries, benefits and keeping the sustainability plan requirement, keeping that in there, right? Those are your three.
No, I said I didn't like the signage.
Oh, yeah.
But that's a personal.
Didn't like the sign.
Yeah, I don't like that, but that's a personal thing and I really, I'm, I'm not gonna die on the hill for that, right? Okay.
Yes, the edits, the. The amendments that I'm seeing from our proposals are providing clarification on the ability to come to county court outside of the grant cycles. Um, yeah, keeping the employee salaries and benefits within the allowable grant uses. And then. Leaving the sustainability plan requirements in the operational support grant.
Oh, and then I see, and, and then I think you had talked about taking the rejection and approval notices out.
Yeah, just amending that to.
Yeah.
To say something, just change the wording of that to be um. You know, list sought out grants or I'll have to think about that, not on the spot, but.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I understand why they want to know that because they, we, we don't want to be the only, only funding source, so we want. You know, people to go out and. See other funds. Are we, you need to discuss any further? Okay, do we have a motion? And I'm sorry to do this to two of you. I will um. Approve the op, do you want one for each one or just the whole thing?
You could do all three, capital projects, operational support.
I make a motion to approve the. Capital investment grant guidelines, applications and attachments, the operational support. Grants, guidelines, application and attachments. Social projects grant guidelines, application and attachments as amended. And the amendments include. And the amendments include uh capital investment grant guideline review process, uh adding language. For coming in front of the county court. Uh, operational support grant guidelines, allowable grant funds. Uh, putting the employee salaries and benefits back into allowable grant uses. Um, removing uh the verbiage in the general guidelines with rejection and approval notices. And, and putting the sustainability plan requirement back in.
Did we get that?
Yes, she did it.
I will second.
That was a long motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, are there, is there any, there's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? And good job, Leah. You did a good job. All right, um, so, uh. The, so we need a vote and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and the operational support guidelines and grant application is amended. And I hope that everybody feels they were heard today. Thank you for coming. Right, and those are going out and soon, like it's gonna be in the paper, April first, April, April second, or? When do we send out the, put it in the newspaper?
Date that we decided, we haven't, I mean, set a set date, we just, before the process, we kind of relied on the budget committee, but that's no longer the process, so um. I guess it was just determined on what happened here this week and then going from there, so.
Do they typically have like thirty days to apply from the time we put uh the forms up on the website in the newspaper?
Yes, yes, it'll roughly be that thirty days and I'll send out an email to prior applicants and, and then it'll get posted in, of course, the website and, and the newspaper.
Thank you for all your work on this. It's, it's a big part of, and I, I would. Brooke emphasized on the website, if you put that out there, that there is going to be two cycles. For the special projects, so that, because I know there's people that. They're always like, oh, my God, it's closing, I gotta get my application in. So I think they know that. They can do that.
Yeah, I'll try and figure out a way to word it so that they. Know that they should probably go for the spring one, especially if then they're in the south end of the county, um, because that's when the, the funds will be. Their highest.
They're more heavily used there. And I thought of you guys, when you were talking about your security cameras and stuff. Apply for the special projects grants for those. Yeah. Yeah, because the north end is not heavily utilized. No, and that's the perfect thing. And those are thirty thousand or less, is that correct, Brooklyn?
Uh, yes, thirty thousand for capital projects, twenty thousand for community innovation, seventy-five hundred for events.
Okay, that concludes that agenda item. So eight point four, discuss annual roundtable meeting, strategic plan goal number four. In the strategic plan, it, it states that we will have annual meetings of all taxing districts. Um, and other community partners, and I think we need to. I just want to talk about that. I think we should do that. I think it's good to get everybody in the same room to talk about the goals for the year, things that are, have in common, um. It's good. Housing, childcare, all of it.
So you want to just set up like a special meeting, possibly in the.
Yeah, right. I think it should be one where north and south are both there at the same time in the county court, so. Uh, but yeah, it would be setting up a special meeting. We're gearing up with uh the budget process, so I think. And you know, early summer, late spring, we're through with that, might be a good time because everybody's gonna be dealing with their budgets. You have any input, Jed, since you're here or Joe Clotten? Okay.
Yeah, we have the meeting.
Good, okay, good. All right, so we'll start working on that. Any, anything else to add on that?
Is it one, something we can do like after a meeting, like maybe beginning like at one o'clock?
Yeah, I would work too. Um, the only problem would be, I'm thinking evening because. Um, some of the taxing districts have volunteer boards. And they work, so. But. We can look at both options, yeah.
Push out a, a doodle poll as well is always really nice to the, the top, the, you know, the. Not necessarily CEOs, but the tops of those organizations so that they can provide input on what days and times work best for them beforehand as well.
Yeah, thank you. You can do that, but.
Doodle poll is very straightforward for everybody. It's a, it's a good thing.
Okay, good. All right, um, announcements, next meeting, next meeting is April second, ten o'clock AM. Forgot that right on you, didn't I? Yes, in the Gillum County courthouse. Um, our budget committee meeting has been moved. It hasn't been moved, it will be advertised and will occur on, Brooklyn is at the.
Uh, April Monday, April fourteenth, eight thirty AM. Grants, I just need a confirmation from you. I received that.
I thought I sent it.
We got confirmation now, perfect, eight thirty, the fourteenth. That works.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, the fourteenth. If, if a second meeting will be needed, it will be the twenty-first, the following Monday. And we'll advertise for both of those in the newspaper at the same time, just to cover bases.
That's at the courthouse, right, Brooklyn?
Yes, but tho- those will both be at the courthouse in the circuit courtroom upstairs.
Yeah, because the seventh or the fourteenth are pretty sore. Yeah.
Okay, yesterday Senator Merkley called the town hall in Gillum County. It was very, very good, very informative. Um, yeah, there was a lot of good comments, a lot of good conversation, but um during that, he. He produced this guide to Oregon pressures and it's a. It's a journal, every single county is in here, the things you can do in each county. And so um, you can get this. On his website or the information is included in this booklet, but thought that was good. So as far as things have been going on this month, um. I met with Jessica Metta. The assessor is working with them on some boundary things for um. Potentially moving to Maquette. Um, which is economic development district, um, larger economic development district, um. And it would be Senator, it's the Dowling area, yeah. And I have a meeting tomorrow with them to talk, to attend their meeting, to start gearing up for that process. Um, we, Leah, excuse me, Commissioner Watkins and I both attended the um. SWCD annual meeting and Gillum County was um given special, a special award for their help with the virtual fence program. And that was nice to receive. Um, working on the budget process with Brooklyn, Nathan, everybody in the building. We have budget narratives coming in, which are very, gonna be a good addition to the budget to explain what each program is and the goal for those programs. What, uh, what else is, oh, I performed a wedding ceremony this month. That was an interesting one, um. I have a meeting with Nate Skyes coming up next week and he is uh regional solutions governor's representative. Let's see, what else has been going on? Meeting with a lot of people in the office on, um, the courthouse regarding budget issues. If you haven't done your uh statement of economic interest, that's coming up. The window is open and it lasts till, I believe, the fifteenth of April. And um, that's pretty much what we've been working on. What have you been working on?
Can I go, Leah?
I was trying to find my phone to see what. Remember what I did. It's not been that important.
March eighth, I attended a. The Rock Street Schoolhouse, they're trying to. They're gonna become a nonprofit, they're trying to solve these out. That was a great turnout. There was about probably forty, fifty people there. And you received a letter from Cordial Power, had a great conversation with Annabelle and Sean on. March fourteenth, discussing the. Proposed easement. Sean brought up that uh, um. There's no fee to charge them for that, and he said that's kind of unusual, but uh, I would like to try to do some, I'm gonna look at some other. Um, county easements, reach out to some people. Um, to see what they have and, and get back. With Sean and Annabelle on that. I think we need to have some improvements on the application form and stuff going forward. Uh, but overall, I'd say it was a great meeting, um. March fourteen, three a meeting. Like I say, a lot of uncertainty out there, the federal level, um. Transmission, power needs, data centers. All behind the eight ball still, and uh, they're still talking, even to the county, the small new. Possibly, but uh. Lot of, lot of uh things on the horizon, but doesn't sound like anything really set in stone to fix it. But yesterday, I also attended Merkley's town hall and uh, brought up the question about EMS service support for some of our rural county. And I mentioned that to Ron Wyatt in August, I believe, when he was at the town hall, anyway. somebody from Mr. Merkley's office was supposed to get back to me and I have a North Corps meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Good. Michelle Watkins. So we had a uh Columbia Ridge um advisory committee meeting last night, which went well, but Watco was actually on the call this time. Um, one of the things that just as a citizen, I think Rich Harper brought up was um the, his concern that the county isn't going to give any value of the old Cedar Springs Road um, if we turn it over. So I'm just
Uh huh.
Bringing that to the board.
I do know that Dewey had talked about one time um reclaiming the, the pavement and stuff on that. So there, um, there's value in that, but
Right.
That's a discussion for another time. Okay. But other than that.
The one other thing I want to mention is we've gotten through the strategic investment program agreement. Now there will be an IGA. The community service fee that comes from the agreement um is, is distributed to the districts. So talk to all of the districts about that. And so you will be presented with an IGA, which is a similar IGA that you've received before, but it'll have um you actually will be getting more than you have in other um community service fee distributions. So um, that will be coming to you next. So you need to get through this and then we're going to do the IGA. So those, I was going to go around and talk to all the districts today, this afternoon about our numbers. We haven't already drawn that. So we have ninety days or else business Oregon decides for this reason for us. So we have a little bit of time, but not a lot of time.
I did have one thing I forgot. Um, the Anderson Perry design study contract is still in the works. Um, legal counsel looked at it and they had some suggestions. I haven't signed anything, but it's still in the works of getting that signed with Anderson Perry and completing so.
Thank you. I, I would like to know from Jed, how is the housing thing up on the hill going?
I was going to comment, but I didn't get here in time during the initial stage. We received nine bids. The parental bidder is Poland Construction. We issued a notice of intent to award uh, I think it was the amount. One million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. That's real close to the county award. We're grateful for the county award to be able to install that infrastructure at Alphali Ridge. They would have a hundred and fifty days to project completion. That would also align with our timing on the on the grant extension that was given to the port previously. So all things go for that project.
How many lots?
There are there are only, I think it's thirteen lots developed as part of that subdivision submittal. However, that front three and a half acre lot can have much more density than that as a developer purchases and takes that on. And that's kind of been our focal point all along is the workforce housing aspect of that. There are portions of that site that are larger lots uh single family home type builds that might take longer to play out for you know, higher wage earners probably for those sections. But to focus on that workforce housing, you know, we could fit twenty, twenty, twenty-five uh um multi-family or whatever type of, of development happens, there are twenty units of housing in that front.
Oh, twenty units, okay. And this is for just the infrastructure? This is to get them building ready, right?
Exactly. And the, I mean, the port took on that role as a facilitator for infrastructure.
Uh huh.
Our intent is not to be that start to finish be a builder, be a developer. It's just that uh, things are at a standstill and we recognize the need for workforce housing. And so the port went ahead and took that on. We're able to partition the, the home site separately and sell it. Were able to um, you know, receive, greatly receive funds from the county and put in that infrastructure, move the needle so that eventually had, had off the private industry and let them drive and build, build the units. Uh, it's, it's one of those, you know, we talked about earlier. It takes a while to implement these large projects. Also, we appreciate the flexibility that's, that's granted there with getting that extension on funds, things like that. So but anyway, shortly we'll, we'll see some movement up there with with installing the water sewer and streets.
Good. Thank you. And he has a plan that can show you can look at a grant.
I saw it online. Yeah.
He has a three D one, he created. There we go. Okay, is there any other business? Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
If you know any other business, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.